Okay, let's go ahead and get started with our work session. It is about 9:35. Before I turn it over to Al first or to Josh?
Yeah, I'll go first.
To Al first. I was going to say this in the regular meeting, but just a reminder of the Steve Warren Retirement Event. You should have seen this flyer in your mail. Note that there's an RSVP by the 15th of September, so please take a look at that and get your RSVP in. All right, with that, Al.
Yeah.
Greenway.
Well, this is an exciting morning for Kent County and many of our partners as we get a chance to update the Board of Commissioners on what I think is one of our transformational initiatives that will put us on the map, I mean, not only throughout the state, but really throughout the nation. And that is the Grand River Greenway Project. This is a project I worked on for many years in Ottawa County. And I think as of today, they're maybe three, four years away from actually having the 10-foot paved trail go from the beach in Grand Haven to downtown Grand Rapids. And so really connecting Lake Michigan to the city is really kind of an exciting thought. But then you think, there's seven parks and six natural -- county parks and six natural areas in Ottawa County. It goes through the Grand Valley Campus. It ties the two campuses together, Grand Valley Allendale, Grand Valley Downtown. And then you think of the Fred Meyer Rail Trail that comes 120 miles from the east and stops at the Kent-Ionia border. So right now Kent County is kind of the gap between linking about 200 miles of trail. Also in Kent County, the Iron Bell Trail that's going from Detroit up to the U.P. actually kind of has a point, a junction point in Kent County. So there's so many things that get tied together when you look at the trail, three of our five rivers, just on and on. And so this has been a focal point for a number of our community groups. You'll hear from our County Parks Department today. You'll hear from DGRI. There's been substantial investment by the public sector, by you as a board, through the ARPA money. DGRI received $55 million, and a good chunk of that has been allocated to the Grand River Greenway. And so I just wanted to mention, a Greenway is more than a trail. It's a system. It's a place where many activities can take place within the Greenway boundaries. But obviously, what ties it all together is the trail piece of that. So without further ado, I will have Josh Spencer come up, and then he will kind of walk us through our day's activity, and he'll speak first. So Josh.
Thank you. So I've had the good fortune of working on Greenway projects for six or so years before joining Kent County, and so this is kind of near and dear to my heart. And as you look at, you know, the Grand River and, you know, what that, how it bisects the county and goes through a lot of the major population centers, it really is quite significant. And as some of the work, early work I did, I'm actually contracted with the Kent County Parks Foundation when they were looking at what to do with the Parks Centennial, you know, I did some work in looking at countywide recreation priorities. And the Greenway and non-motorized trails were really rose to the top when looking at local plans and talking with local officials and all the work that's been done within our, all of our communities in Kent County. And this map kind of highlights it. It's a little crude, but these are the existing trail systems. Again, this is more than trails, but kind of highlights, you can see the noticeable gap when you see where the Grand River runs through the middle of the county. There are no green lines, so there are no regional trails that are connecting along the Greenway, but they're pretty significant trails, you know, coming in. So you're looking at, you know, the White Pine Trail coming down from the south, the Meyer Rail Trail going out to the east, all the way to Owasso. You have the Meyer Pioneer Trail going up through Lowell. And then you have the Musketalaw Trail, and the trails from Renato County, and some plan coming up from the north, from the south. And so looking at, this is a major gap, and that's what was, that's kind of what sparked Kent County and the Parks Foundation in pursuing a regional backbone trail. That work is validated by the work that DGRI did, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But noticeable gap in our regional connections. So also talk about that this is really, I mean, 25 years or so of planning have went into all the work that you'll hear some of today. We won't be able to touch on everything. But the Greenway really has been, and the Grand River has really been, the focus of a lot of planning throughout the years, a lot of community feedback. So, I mean, there has been a lot of engagement to see that this is a priority, so just touching on some of those there. I think it's important to talk just briefly about kind of the why and why this is important. You know, certainly, you can go on and on about this topic, but, you know, the fact that, you know, having access to outdoor spaces and trails is certainly part of having a healthy community and having healthy residents. You know, you think about what happened in COVID and how people sought out our park systems as a release, and I think that was, that was kind of natural. We were inherently, that's our natural reaction. So, but also environmental health. A lot of these projects are kind of designed to reverse some of the things that we've done to the river in the past. And in some ways, I was actually talking with our emergency management team, you know, some of these projects are designed to actually increase our flood capacity and things like that, so that's important. And then community economic development. So I chose an image, this image on purpose. We'll hear a little bit about Ada Township and their downtown project, and certainly it's important when you look at downtown Grand Rapids, downtown Ada, Lowell, you know, the importance of the Greenway as those areas are developed. But we also have a large manufacturing base here of companies that serve this industry, and there really is an importance of having that culture here and having more of that work done. You know, Wolverine Worldwide moving all their headquarters back to Kent County, or to Kent County. You know, we have major bike manufacturers, and so that's an important part of our local economy that I don't want to lose sight of. And so also part of the work I did before joining Kent County was with DGRI, and again, you'll hear from them in a moment, but we inventoried, so it's really like, what is the Greenway? That was always kind of a question, and what does it, you know, entail? So we did an inventory of all the projects that are in the works and are being planned. Now, this is not amphitheaters, soccer stadiums, aquariums, this is all just parks and trails. So there's over 30 projects that we've identified, and it's over 290 million total in investment that will be coming in the Greenway that are currently planned. But that's a multi-decade, you know, process. So it'll take time for those to be done, but those are what we've identified in our local units of government and all the partners are working on, including our own park system. So with that, I want to dive into some of the projects that are part of the Greenway and start with our own Kent County Parks System and our Parks Foundation, what they're working on, and certainly encourage you, there are time for questions at the end, but if you have project-specific questions, please ask them as our presenters come forward. So I want to start with calling up Ben Sw -- unless you have any questions now? Yes?
Question. You've mentioned the increased flood capacity. Are we talking about any dredging-type issues with the river? That's been brought up. Is that part of this overall package?
Well, so there would be some of that required. I'm fairly confident for, we don't know what the white water project's going to be, and so we specifically wanted, I know you heard from them recently, we wanted to focus on the dry portion, is what we've been calling, you know, the parks and trails. But certainly in-channel work, there will be some of that, and there will be some more detail there shortly on what that will entail. So not really anything new to report there, other than what you've already heard, and I know they're working on plans now that they've heard from Eagle. So that's some of the in-channels work that will be happening.
There was some private interest in dredging?
Oh.
So I didn't know if we were --
Yeah, that's, that's another issue too that we won't address, but I know that's been proposed and, yeah.
Yep. More to come. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll have Ben Swasey come up and start his presentation on the Greenway trip.
Thanks, Josh, and thanks to everybody for inviting us here today to talk a little bit about this project. You know, I had the opportunity to work on this a little bit in the periphery in my previous role in Cascade Township, and the ability to be able to work on this project in this capacity with the county is one of the many things that drove me to apply for this position. But from the county parks perspective, we're really leading the effort to build 23 miles of new trail in Kent County, which will essentially connect the White Pine Trail in Plainfield Township at Rogue River to the Fred Meyer Grand River Valley Rail Trail in Ionia County at the Lowell Township border. As Al mentioned, it's part of a broader effort to complete a 76-mile Grand River Greenway in Kent County, and once it's completed, the trail will be part of a massive trail stretching from Grand Haven all the way to Owasso. So this is the, what I'll call the conceptual map of what we're trying to do in Kent County at this point. So as you can see, it incorporates part of the current Millennium Park trails, part of the current Downtown River Edges Trail, the Fred Meyer White Pine Trail, and a series of trails in Ada Township. So, you know, the good thing is part of the network is already built through some of our partners. If you look at the map, essentially, the red trail with the yellow outline is the trail that we're attempting to build as part of the Grand River Greenway Project. Besides that 23 miles of new trail, the project is going to entail trailheads, bridges, tunnels, and interpretive stations. As Al mentioned, the Greenway is more than just a 10-foot asphalt pathway. It's a way for our residents and our visitors to interact with nature and our community. And then you'll see there's some red lines on there that aren't part of the red and yellow. So the red and yellow essentially gets us through Kent County, but there's other strategic connections that we want to make as well. A big one is, if you follow the beginning of the yellow and red trail coming to the east, once it passed Canonsburg, there's a red trail going out essentially to Townsend Park. That would connect with Cannon Trails and be able to take that to the north to visit another four of the county park properties. And then another big one at the, at the end, as you get closer to the Ionia County border, is finding a way to go south in order to connect to the Kent County Youth Fair property, and then back to the Lowell Regional Greenspace property that the county owns. So talking a little bit about the budget, we have put a project budget together, working with Canari and our original conceptual partners, and we have pegged the cost for creating the Greenway at about $52 million. And you can see through the chart there that we've actually divided it into 12 different projects. And the idea is that one or more of these may be going on at the same time, and I'll talk a little bit about why that's important. But you can see it's broken down by regions, so we have a trail and tunnel project in Plainfield Township. We have a couple trail projects in Cannon Township, a couple trail projects, and a bridge project in Ada Township, and then Cascade Township and Lowell Township. And then you'll see at the bottom, then we have two trailhead projects as part of this initiative. A trailhead at Johnson Park, Millennium Park, and a trailhead at Chief Hazy Cloud. And I'll talk a little bit about that near the end of the presentation. So in the middle, you'll look at, see where we are anticipating this funding from coming from. So the good news is, we have about half of the funds committed, or over half of the funds committed already. Thank you to the commission for committing $10 million of the county ARPA funds to this project. We are already putting those to good use. You'll hear from our project partner DGRI in a little bit. They've committed another $16 million of the funding that they were able to get to the project as well. So that leaves us with the two darker-green parts of the pie chart. So, oh, I should mention as well that we have a $500,000 pending appropriation from the federal government, so. So looking at the two dark-green pieces of the pie, we are going to be attempting to seek another $14.5 million in public funding. That will come either from local municipal partners, state and federal appropriations, or local, federal, and state grants. And we are meeting on a regular basis to determine the best way to pursue those funds for this project. And then we are anticipating another $15 million in private philanthropy. So a huge partner in this project is our Kent County Parks Foundation, and Sam Moore, the Director of the Parks Foundation, is here to answer any questions that you may have about the private funding. But the good news is that the Parks Foundation really went through, recently went through campaign development feasibility study to determining if there was capacity in our philanthropic community in order to support this. And we got a glowing report for them, basically telling us to move forward, that from their perspective, they see this being very well supported by our philanthropic community. To that end, we actually have a team meeting tomorrow, strategic members of our county team, and of course, the Parks Foundation getting together to figure out how we're going to develop that private philanthropy campaign. So developing the trail, as you mentioned, it goes through a lot of municipalities in Kent County, and to that end, we are establishing a multi-jurisdictional team that will guide the development of the final trail routing. So we've invited participants from Ada Township, Cannon Township, Plainfield Township, Cascade Township, Lowell Charter Township, and then the Kent County Road Commission as well. The other great thing that we are able to do at this point is we worked with Cal and Purchasing to develop what I'm calling our bullpen of engineering firms to assist with various phases and sections of the project. For a project of this size, we have a pretty tight timeline. It seems like the end of 2026 is a long ways away, but in the construction industry, especially in this day and age, it's not a lot of time. And we anticipate that multiple phases of this project will be going on at the same time. To that end, it was very important for us to have more than a couple firms to be able to work with. Purchasing was great to work with, this was kind of a new thing for us. We hadn't done this before, where we essentially pre-qualified engineering firms, and now we have a list of five engineering firms. There's very extensive local experience in trails project that we can use to further vet different portions of this project. And that, to that end, we've actually just recently picked our first firm out of our bullpen, which was an application that was put in by Prayna Newhoff in partnership with Morin Brujink, and they're going to assist the county in developing our final routing plan. So the map that you saw in the earlier slide was basically conceptually looking at a, you know, a map, looking at our GIS system, where is the potential area, the best route to go through. Now we get into the nuts and bolts where we look at constructibility. And through this whole process, there's going to be a balance between the constructibility of the project and the user experience, all right? So if you're going to ask me what the easiest way to build this project is, it's simply to go in the road right of way, right, where we have it. But that's not going to provide the best user experience for our residents. And a great example is a partnership that the County Parks Department had with Ada Township. They were working on their trail system, essentially going from Two Mile and Knapp all the way down to Chief Hazy Cloud. And though part of that trail does end up in the road right of way, we were able to work with them, once we get to Chief Hazy Cloud, to actually snake that trail into our park to increase the user experience on that. So over the next couple months, we'll be working with our partner communities and our engineering firm to determine what that balance is of constructibility and user experience. And our hope is that by the end of this year, we will have the trail in hand that we plan on building. As I mentioned, the project includes three major pieces of trail infrastructure. So the first is going to be a tunnel under Northland Drive at Rogue River. The project cost for this is estimated at $6 million. We're anticipating the engineering for this to begin essentially right after the final routing is done, and the estimated construction for this part of the project is 2024 and 2025. One of the projects that isn't necessarily included in the project budget is a pedestrian bridge on Knapp over the Grand River. That is a project that was worked on between Ada Township and DGRI, and is actually fully funded through those two entities, but will be done as part of this project. Engineering on that will begin right of way. Because it's a pedestrian bridge next to the current bridge, the routing for that's already decided, it goes where it goes, right? But we will be working with the Kent County Road Commission to determine if there's an opportunity to work with them and actually work on the actual bridge itself rather than a completely separated bridge. There may be an opportunity for us to partner to make sure that when that bridge needs additional vehicle capacity in the future, that's available as well. And then what I would call probably the premier piece of infrastructure in the project is a pedestrian bridge between Rosale and Chief Hazy Cloud Parks. If I mean you had opportunity to go to the Riverfront Park in Lowell Township, they have the two bridges that connect the parks there. That is an absolute premier piece of infrastructure for the trail system and the parks there, and we hope to not only emulate that, but create something even grand. But four years from now, when I'm up here and we're giving the presentation on the final project, that will be the picturesque piece of this project, is the bridge between those two parks. That project cost is estimated at $6.5 million. We do anticipate that conceptual engineering will begin on this project shortly. This is also going to be one of the premier pieces of the project for our fundraising efforts, and to that end, we anticipate that the construction will happen later in the 25-26 timeline. Just to touch real briefly on a couple other pieces, again, as Al mentioned, this isn't just a trial, this is part of the experience. And with that, we have two trailhead projects. The first is at Johnson Park, and the expansion of our Johnson Park parking lot, and amenities to serve the trailhead will include about a 50% increase in parking at the park, additional biking infrastructure, a four-season restroom renovation, and an open shelter. We're anticipating that this is going to be funded through the county ARPA funding. That was one of the projects that was listed, and the eligible uses for that. This is partially engineered at this point, and we are working on getting architectural services for the restroom, and we're estimating construction on this in the 24-25 timeline. And then another project we've been working on is actually the creation of mountain bike trails in Johnson Park. So not only will people be able to get to the park non-motorized, but then they'll be able to go off of the paved trails onto our natural trails as well. This is a project that we're working on with Kent County Community Action and the West Michigan Mountain Bike Alliance. We're working through various parts of this project right now, and it's estimated that this will be constructed as part of the 24-25 construction periods. And then, whoops. And then lastly, the Chief Hazy Cloud Trailhead and Trail. So for the section that we're creating, Chief Hazy Cloud is essentially in the middle of it, which makes it a good opportunity for a trailhead. And again, this is where the key piece of infrastructure is going to be. The creation of the trailhead and the additional restroom will primarily serve as the park-to-park bridge crossing, but be a midpoint trailhead as well, funded through the county ARPA funding and possibly DGRI funding, and estimated 25-26 construction. Really, this needs to be done in cooperation with the bridge project to make sure that they are copacetic with each other. And then we're actually looking at creating a network of equestrian and natural surface trails and trailhead parking in the project as well. This, we're really pursuing private and philanthropic funding, and it's conceptually planned at this point, and the construction of this part of the project is really based on being able to get that. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the creation of the trail network and the user experience. And as I mentioned, Sam is here if you have any questions about our efforts to raise our private funds.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Chair Steck. So, I mean, the goal of a lot of these is to connect and connect, so you have longer trails that people can enjoy, and everyone's got different uses for this. So the person that's out there, that's a hiker, that wants to hike across this new trail someday, needs a place to stop. I mean, is there any thought on these long trail users, even bike riders of where they can stay, or are they just going to be pitching tents alongside the trail? Are we going to make it more welcoming? You know, I know the one north that has the horse trail has designated spots to stop.
Yeah.
So any thought on what, how that's all going to work out?
Yeah, so, you know, again, as Al mentioned, you know, the idea is to create a user experience through all of this, and part of the scope of the work with our engineering firm that we brought in is to kind of determine what some of those other opportunities are as well. You know, one of the interesting things about our partner to Ottawa County is that the trail is really going to begin as what's being touted as the Idema Explorers Park. They're creating a camping experience there. You know, our hope is, we talked about that section of the trail that will come down to the Lowell Youth Fair. The Lowell Youth Fair has a campground there right now. You know, that would be an opportunity, basically, to advertise this as an experience where you could start at a campground, make the trip, go to a campground, and then go on the way back. But that is also a long path as well. So as we're designing it, we're going to need to figure out where those individual stops may be. I don't know if we'll, along the trail, have a spot where we would designate it as overnight camping. That's interesting. I hadn't thought about that. That's something for us to consider. But my hope is that the private sector will weigh in as well. So this is obviously going through a huge series of private properties. A good example right now is the White Pine Trail. Had a brewery that developed on the side of it, right? So if people get on the White Pine Trail, stop on your bike, you can stop and get a beer. So the hope is that it will actually encourage more private investment along that pathway as well.
Commissioner, I think Antor first.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Thank you for all this information. You know, when I get feedback sometimes from constituents saying, oh, jeez, more parks, more green space, what's this going to cost, right? So it always boils down to cost and where the money's coming from. This seems like something, a friend of mine I just talked to the other day in Lansing, he was talking about the DNR Trust Fund. Right now, they're flush with cash, in his words, and I was thinking, well, that's good, maybe we could, I'm assuming there's going to be a piece of this. Seems like this is right in their wheelhouse, a project like this, and I'm wondering how deep we're going to dig for some of that type of money that's, it's not really taxpayer money because they have a designated fund that comes in from whatever, timber, oil, whatever.
Yeah, yep, that is nice. So I think there's two angles to that, right? So, you know, the first angle is obviously the angle that's available to everybody else, which is the DNR Trust Fund. The issue with that is applications are really limited to $300,000 based on the current application guidelines. But I think there's certainly opportunities for us to tap into that program. But I think it also lends itself to a larger discussion with the DNR as well, and possibly direct appropriation funding, similar to how DGRI was able to get the ARPA funds for a part of this as well. This trail will meet a major initiative of the Michigan DNR as well, and for them to be able to, you know, as we're going to our legislators, asking them to appropriate direct funds for this project, making sure that the DNR is helping us out with that conversation as well, because it does meet the goals that they have.
Seems like, would the MEDC be in this at all, or is that something?
What's that?
The MEDC.
So they do have, you know, a lot of their transportation-related grants are related to vehicle transportation, but they do have some transportation-related grant programs. We do have a good relationship with The Right Place as well. In fact, Josh and I met with Tim Raz, their Community Development Director, just last week. This is something that they're very interested in as well, so using them as a regional partner to help tap into maybe some of those funds that we don't have direct access to is something.
Anything we could, I'm just saying, right now taxpayers are feeling a little burned out with the cost of everything going up. It's like, where's the money going to come from? So that's, that's really difficult conversation to have sometimes, so, thank you.
Commissioner Buja.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Mr. Ben, your first presentation here before the Commissioners, and I just have to commend you on your preparation. Very nicely done. Thank you very much. In your discussion here today, you were talking about the upfront cost of all of this. In your discussions, you talk about the long-term maintenance costs of these trails, and how is that managed because you're crossing multi-jurisdictional areas, and who pays for the long-term maintenance of these trails? Because I know on an annual basis, somebody has to go in there and trim the trails back, snowplow, or whatever they've got to do, and what about those costs?
Yeah, no, thank you for asking that question. I meant to touch on that when I talked about our partners. The great thing about this project is it's going through communities that have built-in revenue sources for park and trail maintenance. So Plainfield Township has a trail village, Cannon Township has a park and trail village, Ada Township has a trail village, Cascade Township has a trail village looking at a park village. So the conversation that we've been having with our municipal partners is that we agree that there's going to be a collaborative effort to determine what that long-term maintenance is. I don't know if DGRI is planning on talking about it or not, but they're actually going through a process right now to develop maintenance standards for the entire trail section, right? So not only the trail section that we're looking to build, but the trail sections that are in the city of Grand Rapids, the trail sections that are owned by the state of Michigan, so that we can all be on the same page about what this is going to look like. What we don't want to have happen is to spend $52 million on a trail, and 10 years from now, for our residents to tell us the user experience is terrible because it's full of cracks and the weeds are overgrown. So figuring out how to pay for it is one thing, but making sure that we're all on the same page about how we're going to maintain it is just as important.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Really exciting, and it really fits together all the trail systems. So we, you know, have experience with traffic, you know, whether it be the individual or, you know, the groups. But I do wonder at the safety issues. I mean, we'll be wanting more people to be doing this, you know, you're not isolated as, you know, just you and your trail partner on it. But, you know, I particularly react to going But, you know, I particularly react to going through a tunnel or over a bridge where you, there's no out for you, whatever's at the end, and can you see the end? I'm really curious as to what safety measures you're putting into the thought process here.
Yeah, and that was why it was really important for us to develop that bullpen of engineers, because when we put out that RFP, we got 12 engineering firms that we responded, right? And of course, just like any good public steward, you know, we're looking to make sure that we're being efficient with our money too. But we really wanted to make sure that our engineering and our consulting partners had the expertise that we're looking for. All of the engineers that are in there have built very successful trail sections, built tunnels, built bridges, not only in Michigan, but all over the country. So we're looking for them as they're helping us design these intersections, design these trails, to make sure safety is at the forefront. Because I agree wholeheartedly, you know, a trail system isn't going to be successful if our residents don't feel safe using it.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Ben, for the presentation. Having served on the Plainfield Township Board before I came into this role, we put a big emphasis on trails, as you guys know. With the trails millage that you mentioned, which I think is approaching, or maybe past 10 years now of existence, been able to do some really great things with that, and been able to utilize the White Pine Trail, you know, kind of as the backbone of that. So I'm really appreciative that you're working with Plainfield, and I think when we overlay this with what their, what their own plan is, I'm picturing in my head where that'll connect and complement that. I think that'll be really excellent. So I just wanted to clarify, because this used to be my district and isn't anymore, it's Commissioner Teal's district, but where we talk about Rogue River and Northland. So that is that intersection, not the one south, correct?
Correct.
And we're going to go under there, at that Rogue River, by the golf course there?
Yeah, and to that end, Plainfield's already been a great partner. Bill Fisher there has set up a series of meetings with us, with Blyfield Country Club, because in order to be able to do that tunnel there, we're going to need their cooperation and easements. Not only do they own the golf course, but they own a couple residential properties along there as well.
Sure.
So when we were doing the conceptual planning, there were some things that we did a little bit more than just on paper, and they spent a lot of time figuring out where we're going to be able to cross Northland Drive, and that by far makes the most sense there. So that was a long-winded answer of yes, that's correct, it's going to be at that intersection.
I'm glad to hear it. That intersection's been a challenge from a traffic perspective. It's a bear for MDOT, it's a bear for the township. So, and obviously, we have a lot of folks, we have a great opportunities for pedestrian travel, but not access because of the way it's laid out. So I'm eager that we're going to have a solution there. The other thing, just as an aside, when we talk about the user experience and things along the way, it just occurs to me that where we're planning these trails covers just some fascinating points of history in the county, you know, along the riverway and all that. So I'd love to see if we could consider some ways, I know we mentioned markers, the experiences that way, and maybe even think about some content that we could produce with some of the historic folks to, maybe some audio content that folks could access while they're experiencing the trail. I just think there's tremendous history all the way back to, you know, the Native Americans that lived in the area, and all the way through industrial revolution, that kind of thing, especially in Plainfield Township. So just a bug in the air on that. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's great that you mentioned that. We actually, very early when I started here, we had the opportunity to meet with the Ottawa County team and talk about what they're doing, and they're working on that exact thing right now, you know, being able to have these, basically focusing on those two things, history and the Native American heritage, which are, as part of our engineering process, they'll be responsible for helping us identify where are the key points that we'll be able to put those in. We'd like to have it unified, right? So we don't want the interpretive experience to change just because the border changed, right?
Plainfield Township or not.
Yeah, so having something that you can start in Grand Haven and have that interpretive experience all the way through Kent County. It's important that we partner with Ottawa to make sure that happens.
Awesome. Thank you.
So Ben, I have a follow-up question. The, years ago, when the White Pine was pushed through Walker, I remember, one of the key issues raised by residents had to do with security along the trail. What's the, and of course, the broader the network, perhaps the greater that question. What's the strategy anticipated to use to assure security along these trails?
Yeah, so, I mean, a lot of the strategy is going to be dispelling that meth, that myth. So in all the communities I've worked in, we've always had that, you know, whether it was sidewalks or pathways, you know, essentially that people, having that thought out there that these are going to attract nuisances, attract theft, attract crime into their area. And the statistics just don't play that out. So I think it's, you know, it's good that you bring that up. It'll be a strategy that we'll have to go through to help our residents understand that, yep, we understand that there may be, you know, the idea floating out there that this happens, but the statistics show that this type of investment, this type of infrastructure doesn't increase crime, it doesn't increase home invasions or anything like that.
Yeah, a lot of it's perception, and no question about that, but I'm wondering, and unfortunately, it only takes one event for that perception to really set. So it strikes me that it would be valuable to at least think about, as you market this out, that there is some security protocol that's in place. So whatever that should be.
We'll keep that in the forefront, definitely.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
I was wondering, when this thing's completed, totally done, at some point, who actually owns this? Who's the big umbrella? Is there, is there like one entity? This is going through all kinds of jurisdictions. Well, I was wondering about like the DNR Trust Fund, you know, does each community get a bite at that apple, maybe to apply for a portion to extend that, or how does that work?
Yeah, essentially, so each community along there, as long as they have a five-year master plan, would be eligible to apply, and that's certainly a tactic that they will put in place. But the broader question, the answer to that is, we're still working on that, right? Because the funding's coming from all different sources. You know, there's different entities working on different parts of it. You know, there will be sections that cross jurisdictions. So we've had a couple of periphery conversations with our accounting department, with our legal department, about how that works. But there's still a lot of work to determine that, you know, when the day it opens, who actually is going to have ownership of each park.
Commissioner Hennessy, for a second.
Another question. We had a present, there was a short presentation, a pie chart, on the financing. Can we hear a little bit more on how the financing elements are going to come together and what the plan is, particularly for the private fundraising? And, you know, and also how this ties into our $10 million for ARPA, which definitely, and I don't know if other monies have deadlines, but ours does, and how this will all tie together? I'd like to hear more in the whole financing area.
So I'll talk a little bit about the public money, especially the money that we have right now, then I'll invite Sam up to talk about the private. But from the public perspective, it's going to go back to those 12 individual projects, right? So even though we're talking about a $52 million, 23-mile path, we've divided it into 12 different projects. And a lot of that is to make sure that the funding that is available to it right now, specifically the county ARPA dollars and the DGR funding, is spent in the timeline that it needs to be spent in, right? So when our conceptual engine, or when our final routing is done in December, we will have sections, projects that are ranked by constructability, right? So this is something you could do right now, this is something that you need to go through a year of permitting in order to do, this is something that you need to do two years of permitting. Because, I'll be honest, I'm very, out of this whole project, I'm probably most concerned about the capacity in the market to create projects like this. Come 2025 and 2026, you're going to have a lot, a lot of municipalities that are trying to spend their ARPA funding by the deadlines that were imposed. Being able to spend our dollars as early as possible to meet those deadlines are going to be important. So once the final routing is done, we will then look at those projects and determine, okay, which ones can we start right away to make sure that the funding that the county allocated for the project, and the funding that DGRI allocated for the project, that $26 million is available right now, is in spend and good time. And then I'll invite Sam up if you want to talk about the.
Good morning. Maybe a follow-up question before Sam. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So on the public funding part of it, I see, you know, DGRI on, that's the Downtown Development Authority, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, my question, in the spirit of.
I'm sorry, it's an organization that oversees DDA and others, and also the Grand River Network, so it's more of an umbrella organization of several others.
Okay, so I'll just ask you that, Al. So where is the funding coming from? Is it, is the funding coming from the tax capture that us and others have had their taxes captured, and then it's going to be used for something outside the downtown?
The DDA separately of the county will, is, no, it's not. So the DGRI money that's allocated is ARPA money. It's part of the $55 million that the state allocated to DGRI for the trail system, and then $16 million of that has been allocated to this project. So it's ARPA money. I'm not aware that the DDA, and I'm on the DDA, but I'm not aware that we're planning to fund the trail through the DDA. I think that's going to be through DGRI, and the Grand River Network will also be involved in fundraising.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's where it gets confusing. I mean, they've got so many names for the DDA and how they operate and the umbrella organization. I mean, just the word transparency of where money is going and what was it originally supposed to go for when we began the DDA, and what it's become to, you know, you know, today is just more and more far-reaching tax capture of local units' dollars.
Well, and I should also mention that, gosh, I think it was around 2010, but there was a gain-sharing method put into place. And right now, the DDA is sharing back to the city and county 10% of the capture as part of the gain-sharing formula. And then, gosh, I can't remember the date, I think it's within the next couple of years, we go to 15%, and then it keeps going up by 5% as we move into the future, just for that reason. I know when we studied all the TIF in Ottawa, we learned that the Hudsonville DDA, the county wasn't going to see any return for 57 years. And so we put a new policy on dealing with TIF employees there. Same thing here, though. I mean, ultimately, you want to make sure that the county shares in the reward of the growth that the TIF allows to happen or helps to happen. And so that's what the gain-sharing piece of the DDA agreement is doing.
But currently, there's no DDA money committed to this.
There's no DDA money committed to this project. What, yeah.
And that's part of the problem, and when that game share. Is this, the size and scope of the DDA's keep expanding? Given us the money, why isn't.
All right, Mr. Sam Moore from the Parks Foundation. Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. So throughout the process, Canary Consulting has been our, conducting the feasibility analysis, and we've wrapped that process up, and it came back with a recommendation to just pursue a major gift campaign, which I think is going to be helpful in the fundraising standpoint. You don't have to launch, so there's a lot of competing fundraising campaigns currently underway in this community, from Mary Freebed to Pine Rest, to the different, Guiding Light has a campaign. There's just a variety of, we're a philanthropic community, there's a variety of fundraising campaigns underway. So for us, it means we don't, the testing came back that the donor capacity is there and the donor willingness is there. And so it meant that we could hit the goal, the $15 million goal, by just conducting a major donor campaign. But simultaneous to that, we are going to do a public phase of it. So we will be, we will have requests before the donors by the Q4 of this year. So hopefully, you know, some of the decisions are made and money starts rolling in by year end or the first part of next year. We've been working with Al and Josh and the entire team here, and they, they have been, we've had joint conversations with a potential lead donor on the trail, and so that is underway. And then we intend to do a community-based campaign to just grow the donor base and participation rate. One of the ideas that came out of the study was, I don't know if you recall or have been to the, out in Millennium Park, there's the tiles out there that all of the GRPS students drew to celebrate the new millennium. So one of the thoughts is maybe in the tunnel, we do a little tile campaign that for a small donation, you could design a tile and it could be placed in the tunnel, or something like that. It, I would, another point of reference would be a brick campaign, but not a brick, but just something to recognize in that people could participate in any form of capacity for any donation. It wouldn't be intended to be a moneymaker, but it would be intended to just have more people participate in the process. So, but so with a major gift campaign, though, the intent is to be a much more condensed campaign, a shorter campaign. And frankly, with all the philanthropic requests and projects that are ongoing in this community, it allows us to kind of get this request out the door and in the donors' hands faster. And then the other benefit I think we have is virtually all of our major donors in this town are trail users, and especially during COVID. Almost all of them reached out to me and asked for different maps, they were checking out our parks, they were riding our trails. It was, it was major donors that really helped prompt the paving of the section up in north of the White Pine Trail. There was an 11-mile stretch that was not paved outside of Kent County, but they, they wrote it and they came to the table and said, hey, what does it take to fund this and finish paving that? So I think that's kind of exciting for us, that they're all users of it, they're kids, they're grandkids. So I think it'll help it, make it a little smoother. It's not easy to raise 15 million, but we're optimistic that we can accomplish it, and we're prepared to jump into the field by Q4. So we're kind of on the verge of jumping off the diving board.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, and that will be, generally, we're hearing a lot of, you know, comments made, you know, questions from us, and then the response is that, you know, obviously there's still more to fill out in terms of answering all of the issues here. And so I assume we'll be able to, you know, be kept up to date and follow along on the progress. But one of my, my other questions, and it ties into what, you know, priorities that you have as a park foundation, as well as our county priorities, is just, what does this project do? And it's not a negative question, it's just simply, what does this project do to the totality of what our park requests and priorities are? And I also know Ben's looking at strategic planning. So if we look at this in the totality of what we want to do, I, I'm not sure where everything's fitting together. And that's, that's another issue that we can, you know, continue to talk about, because, you know, this has been a helpful session, but I really regard it as only a beginning.
The only thing I would say to that point is, I think the master planning process that's currently underway will be our playbook for the next five years, laying out the projects that, that we need to be involved with to raise funds for. So, you know, the process for us is that the staff comes to us with a project and says, this is, you know, it's, it's in our master plan, or this is a land acquisition. Now, sometimes we can be a little more nimble, it may not be in the master plan, but a piece of property becomes available, and they'll approach us and say, hey, can you pull together the funds to provide the match or to make this purchase? But all of, all of the stuff comes through the Parks Department to us. And so I think the master plan will be that, that here's the playbook for the next five years, and laying out the, you know, some of the costs in there, and what can private philanthropy help close the gap on to participate. But, so we work hand and glove with them in identifying the projects, and so for me, for the next five years, it'll be the master plan that will guide that process.
Just to add on to that, our last master plan did show that our residents wanted us to invest in trails and strategic connections. So you'll hear a lot of people referring to this as the Backbone Trail as well. This obviously gets you through the county. I imagine when you look at our next master plan, a lot of that will be focused on how do we connect our strategically connected, our parks that are not on the Backbone Trail to the Backbone Trail, so that you can get from your house to any park in the county, whether it be a county park, township park, a city park, a village park, and not have to get in your car in order to do that.
All right, Vice Chair Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I have a question about some additional funding. You know, this is going to be touching a lot of communities, you know, along the way, and I think it, you know, is definitely enhancing those communities and would also positively impact them, you know, economically. So I'm curious, like, a community like Cascade, are we asking for, you know, matching funds for communities along the trail?
Yes. You know, the easy answer is yes, we'll be asking them to be partners. So different entities will have different abilities to do that. But even getting back to Plainfield Township, right? So making sure we tap into the rules and ordinances that they have. So a good example is with the Blyfield Country Club. With renovations they currently did, they are actually responsible for helping develop part of the pathway, so making sure that we tap into every available resource. But that goes back to getting all of those partner communities involved in the conceptual routing, to make sure that their input is here, heard loud and clear, so that they have more ability to invest it because they were involved in the developing of the final conceptual, or the final route.
Has there been a positive experience, you know, working with those communities, trying to, you know, partner?
So you're going to hear from Ada Township next. I'll leave it to Julius to talk about that. I'll leave it to Julius to talk about that. So his community, probably out of all the communities in Kent County, has, you know, invested the most to the part where they've recently built part of the trails that will be part of this. So, you know, a lot of the communities are investing just on their own, you know, not even really a part of, of this initiative.
Yeah. If there's any, you know, municipal leaders that us, you know, commissioners should be talking to in our districts, you know, just let us know. I'd be happy to work with my community. It doesn't seem like gains is necessarily going to be on this, but, you know, they'll be in a way, shape or form, but just let us know how we can help.
I'll take you up on that for this projects and future projects.
All right, yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. So whenever I see trails, I always think this is only for able-bodied individuals. Am I thinking in the wrong way?
So the, the trail will be divi, developed at a minimum to ADA standards, right? So I always consider that the, the minimum because there are ADA standards that still make it difficult for individuals with disabilities to use it. So any chance we have to enhance that without significantly increasing the price. But, you know, 10-foot wide asphalt trails to ADA standards is going to be the minimum standard.
And is signage only in English?
You know, I haven't thought about that yet, but I would anticipate, no, it won't only be in English. So that is a, a good thing for us to consider.
Thank you.
All right. Are you going to pass it off to?
I think I took way too much time. So if you don't have any other questions, I am going to pass it off. But thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Diaz.
Just one quick comment when it comes to the signage and whatnot, QR codes. I know that there, people are just starting to use those, but if we can't, you know, we can only fit so many languages or words on a sign, QR codes would be, I'm pretty sure, best friends.
1,000%.
All right. Thank you. And I agree, you did a great job in your first presentation. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to just move right along with Plainfield Township. We have Matt from Pryon Newhoff representing them.
Josh, and thank you, Commissioners, for having me. Again, my name is Matt Levanduski. On behalf of Plainfield Township, I've worked for Pryon Newhoff Engineers as a landscape architect. And so I was asked today to talk a little bit about what Plainfield's doing at Grand Rogue Park. And I guess I'll do a quick, brief history for, for you guys on the park itself. For those who aren't familiar, the township acquired the property through a trust fund acquisition grant, I believe it was 2017, prior to myself helping the community with that. But, so they were fortunate to get funding from the DNR to assist with that acquisition. And they've also been very fortunate, thankfully, to have been the recipient of two trust fund grants in 2021 and 2022. Plainfield Township applied for what we're calling the Phase 1 Development Plan for Grand Rogue Park. If you're looking at that map with all the color on it, it basically, Phase 1 for the township would be to pave a access drive back into the, I guess you'd say, to the, to the property trailhead location, which is out near the Grand River. I guess in big, big picture wise here, too, I'd like to point out that this property sits at a very unique location on the intersection of the Rogue River and the Grand River. So it's a very interesting property if you haven't had a chance to get out there. It is almost entirely within the 100-year floodplain, so there is a time of the year where this is difficult to access. However, it's fantastic for what the township is hoping to do there, which would be mostly passive recreation. So what you see on that plan, I guess I'll start with the, the overall kind of concept for the park. It was mostly, we want to get, the township wanted to get people on the water, right, as being at this location. So the site features access to the Grand River, access to the Rogue River, as well as an internal lake there that was developed with the neighboring developer as part of the agreement for the property. So they'll have literally water surrounding you on all sides on this property, which is very cool. So looking at this site, we assisted the township with the master plan to include trails, of course, parking. There's a small playground. We have a kayak launch going into the Manmade Lake, which will also be utilized for fishing and obviously just for recreation in general. There is a nice picnicking area out near the river in that location as well, where we have a picnic shelter. And that's kind of serves as one of the key trailheads to get onto the trail system that is, that has actually already been developed. It's a mowed trail system right now. The township's staff has been working very hard at clearing trails. This, this property actually has a really unique thing to it. When all of the flooding occurs, there is an awful amount of debris that develops out in the woods and on the trails. So the guys out there spend a considerable amount of time clearing trees. And, but the township has done a lot of work to really get this site ready for this Phase 1 project, which, which I will describe here as paving, paving the driveway back into the park, the parking lot, the playground, observation boardwalk and kayak launch, as well as a trailhead and some sidewalk that will tie into their existing restroom building, which will all be accessible. The Phase 2 project would be more towards the north end of the site. You can see a drive that heads over towards the Rogue River. So Phase 2 will include the drive back to some parking. The parking will allow users to bring their kayaks out to the Rogue River. There's been talk with the local canoe and kayak livery that they, they'd like to utilize this site for their purposes as well. So I know Bill Fisher's been talking with them about how that could be done well. And our role in the project has been to not only assist with the conceptual planning and cost estimating, helping the township through the grant process. And now we are undergoing construction drawings. So Phase 1 construction plans are complete. When we found out that they were successful with the Phase 2 plans, we decided that it would be best to roll those two projects together from an efficiency standpoint and from a permitting standpoint. So we'll be finishing up these drawings for construction this fall with it going out to bid with an anticipated construction started in the spring of 2024, where we'll complete Phase 1 and Phase 2. I should also add that the township also applied for a Spark Grant, which we're hoping to find out soon here on. And that would be to, to do what we're calling Phase 3, which will be a pedestrian, paved pedestrian accessible route around the smaller pond that is located at the south end of the property. And that would also have picnic shelter and some fishing decks. And again, it's, and then ultimately, I know that there has been some different talks about the Grand River Greenway Trail coming through this property. But I know that some of those plans have been changing. But one of the other pieces to this master plan that's important is, again, connectivity to the trail system. So one of the long-term goals, which hopefully will be sooner than later, would be to connect this park up along the Grand River over to Jupiter Avenue, where it would tie into the trail on Jupiter. The township is still kind of working through how that route would work. And as you see to the west of the Grand Rogue property is Grand Isle Park, which is where they currently have disc golfing and they're looking at developing soccer fields there as well. So lots of cool activity along the Grand River. This is going to be a signature park for Plainfield Township. They're very eager to provide these recreation benefits to their community and as well as getting the community tied into the Grand River Greenway Trail system. So we've been really fortunate to have got a chance to work with them throughout this process and really looking forward to seeing this get started in 2024. With that, I'll open it up for any questions you guys have.
Thank you.
And if I can answer them, I'll do my best.
All right, Commissioner Green.
Thank you and appreciate all the work that Pryon's done. I know they've been a great partner for the township on a lot of issues for a lot of years. So I'm just trying to picture in my head again, and I've got on my iPad the map you're familiar with, the Plainfield Township Master Plan. So where, so this is again, south to West River. So where are we connecting, perhaps part of the Greenway? I know the crossing we talked about at Rogue River up north of here. So how does that play in a long West River Drive? I, I'm just trying to picture it having, I think there was a map earlier, but it was hard to put them together in my head, so.
Yeah, I know it. This plan, you see there's a little bit, there's a bridge going over the Rogue River. So one of the ideas was to connect through the DNR Park over to Northland Drive. That is a really difficult route. There are some challenges along the north side of the river as you get close to Northland Drive. And, and also now with the, with the Grand River Greenway Trail moving north of West River, it seems to me that the best connectivity really for this park and Grand Isle Park into the system is going to be the route along the river to the west to Jupiter.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's going to be the best way to make the connection.
Because the, the Grand River Trail will connect from, I'm, I'm trying to picture this, there's the, the Plainfield, the Jupiter North Trail, which has been built. And so we'd connect there at Rogue River to the, okay.
Yep.
And take that kind of, meet it in Belmont and then take it down from there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just talked to Scott Post. He's the main trail engineer for Pryon Newhoff on the way over today to get some clarification from what he knows on, on that piece as well. And we're excited to have been, you know, hired to, to really help get this conceptual phase of the trail underway for everybody. So on behalf of Scott Post, I'd like to just say he's, he's very thankful for, for our company's efforts on this project.
And I don't want to monopolize everybody with Plainfield questions, but, so this would, this would, this Grand River Trail would be, take the place of the planned South Rogue Trail. I mean, the same route that Plainfield has on their master plan, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the help. Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions on this? All right, if not, thank you again for getting us up to speed on this.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And just because of the part of this, we did initially look at West River Drive because we did want to connect right, our trail right through this, but it was the floodplain issue. We wanted the trail in totality to be all season, so we didn't want our trail to be flooded part of the year. And so as I call up Ada, I know he's going to talk about another part of this that would be a breakoff that also will be flooded part of the year, but will be part of the same trail network. So I'll call up Julius.
Morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me and happy to provide an update on the work we're doing in Ada. A little bit about how we got where we are. So in 2020, the township went out for a significantly larger millage than our pre-existing trail millage. Residents had identified through the Connect Ada Plan that trails were a high priority connectivity throughout the township and high quality of life recreation. And so ultimately, we moved forward with a 1.5 mil tax levy, which was approved. And then quickly, the board decided there was concern about raising interest rates. And so we moved forward with a $15.2 million bond over 20 years. Our Township Board and Trail Committee have been holding joint meetings to make sure the groups are on the same page. We have a roadmap, which is our Connect Ada Plan. It included a lot of community engagement. But we also know things have changed coming out of COVID, coming out of, you know, additional developments and where neighborhoods are popping up as Ada continues to grow. And then also tying into the Grand River Greenway and some of these other regional connections that weren't necessarily part of the conversation a number of years ago. And so overall, we identified $52 million in projects and we have about $25 million for new construction as part of the millage. But we are setting aside, I know there's a question about maintenance. So maintenance is a really large piece in Ada. We've got over 23 miles of trails right now that we maintain and we spent about $1 million last year resurfacing and rebuilding bridges. And so we are setting aside a certain amount of money, which is increasing every year based on CPI and is not touched under new construction. So if our Board of Trustees and Trail Committee want to build new sections, they have to utilize the funds that we have allocated and not dip into the maintenance fund. And so current projects that are completed, so we had a small section, I have a map that I'll kind of showcase some of these projects. But Butrick Phase Trail, so Leonard Field in Ada Township, there's Phase Street over to Butrick, which leads to Ada Park. That was identified as the number one project for our Connect Ada Plan. We completed that. Pettis Avenue Phase 1, which is connected into the Grand River Greenway Trail. It's 4.2 miles. It was the number four project that has been completed, as well as Cascade Road Trail, Spalding Avenue to Hall Street was completed. This allows residents to come down the Consumers Energy Trail and then actually stay in Ada Township. They don't have to cross over into Cascade. And so, but it allows them to avoid Hall Street crossing, Spalding crossing, and then back across Cascade. So it's three pedestrian conflict points that we've eliminated by creating a very small project. It's about $270,000, but it's a huge safety component. Under construction right now is Fulton Street Trail. Under, it goes from Ada Drive to the Grand River and it goes under the Fulton Street Bridge. This will create a north-south connection through Legacy Park and that will eliminate user, trail, trail user vehicle conflicts. That's the number two project. And then upcoming, we have a number of trail sections and I'll, I'll touch into the map here. So on the map, you'll see from Knapp Street in the north, all the way down to Virgin's, there's the Pettis Avenue Trail. So the Maroon Pettis Avenue, that was completed this past year. So that is the, the very large north-south connector that will tie in to the, the Greenway project. Items, the Fulton Street Trail Bridge is in the box that's located number two. That will go underneath the Grand, the Fulton Street Bridge of the Grand River and create a safe pedestrian crossing. And then also number six is the Knapp Street Bridge that we're, Ben touched on a little bit and we'll touch on a little bit later. But it is a significant connection from the east to the west. So that creates a connection with Grand Rapids Township that we currently don't have and we would like to see take place. Here's some photos of Pettis Avenue Phase 1. I know Ben and Josh had both touched on this, but I'll, and I want to thank the county for allowing the township to partner with the parks and allow us to work, work to meander the trail through Chief Hazy Cloud Park. You know, we went out and walked this site a number of times through some very thick woods and we talked about, you know, putting it as close to the road as possible for ease of use. But then we also talked about, how can you create a user experience when you're right next to the road? And if you travel on Pettis, you know that most vehicles are doing 65 miles an hour. And so we really wanted to create an avenue where they could get into the park. There's a really cool section, if you haven't been through there. When you're coming down from Knapp Street and you cross over Pettis and you're heading southeast, you actually go through the old foundation of a barn. And so we're going to be working with our Historic Society and I know there's some questions about tying into the historic characteristics and components. But then also depending on the time of the year, you're going to get river views, which is really, really neat. And then also creating a little bit more of a safety buffer from those vehicles. And so while we want to, we want to keep people safe, we also want to make the trails accessible. Safety is a big concern. I know we've talked with the county a lot and we'll continue those conversations. When you duck into the trail, duck into the park and you're, you're off the road, what happens if, you know, someone gets injured? What emergency services notification process is there? And so those are all components that we're talking about. There was a question about wayfinding. I know specifically in Ada, we're actually working with Corbin Design and we're going to be unveiling a township-wide wayfinding signage, which is going to incorporate QR codes that will allow people to connect to the larger system, different languages, but then also see the, the total picture, as well as trailheads at multiple locations throughout the township. This is a rendering of the Legacy Park Fulton Street Trail. So on the south, or on the bottom left corner of the picture right here, right now, East Village Apartments is going there. There's 92 units that are currently being constructed. And so as part of the agreement with the developer, they put a trail through the back of their property and then connects up here to Fulton Street. We're also going to connect to Ada Drive here and then make a really, really neat scenic, you know, right, stand under the Grand River, at the Grand River Fulton Street Bridge. And it's going to look like this, similar to what was done in Granville. And this was 15, 10, 15 years of planning when M.DOT came in and redid the Fulton Street Bridge. Ada worked with them to make sure that this could be created so that in the future, we could make this connection when funds were available. Pettis Avenue Phase 2, so this is a very important section of the Grand River Greenway piece. And I know there's a question about what are communities committing to this? I mean, Ada is essentially committing about $15 million to not only these regional trail connections, but then also additional funds to maintain those other east-west, east-west, north-south connections. So we were all ready to go, so right here is the Chief Hazy Cloud entrance on the top left side of the map. And so we were ready to, we had engineering complete, ready to go out to bid and our board members brought up the trail experience. So we had proposed to build the trail on the north side of Pettis Avenue. So you would have to leave Chief Hazy Cloud, cross Pettis Avenue at a surface crossing. to where, right where Deer Run comes in to Pettis. Then you'd have to travel along Pettis on the north side, and then you would have to cross Honey Creek at the Pettis intersection and then make your way over to the Virgens intersection. That project cost about $2.5 million. The township took a step back and said, is this really what we want to do for the user? You know, this is the easiest path from point A to point B, but is it the best path for the connections for what we want for the user? And so we've actually paused this project. We're looking at the private donor community, some of our community partners and other entities to identify and say, is there an appetite to enhance this trail experience and put it on the south side of Pettis? We've had conversations with the Road Commission saying, can we move Pettis eight feet to the north? It was an entertaining conversation, and we'll continue to work on that. But, you know, so we're trying to do it, and I think, I think Ben or Josh had said it, is doing it the right way, making sure that we've got a valuable experience for the long haul. And so right now, we're looking at what those options are. It might be a mixture, so it might be on the north side of Pettis, but it might include a tunnel underneath Pettis and then also maybe a bridge back across Pettis at Honey Creek. Our board is very concerned about the vehicle pedestrian safety, and it's really become a conversation of the first one will be too many. And so while we understand that surface crossings are a component of any trail system, if you've been at the Honey Creek and Pettis intersection, looking left, looking right, it's kind of chaotic and not something that we want to bring pedestrians into if we can avoid it. So this is an exciting map and kind of ties in. Number five is where the Pettis Trail up in the upper-right corner would come into downtown, connect to this blue line, number six. That is the Fulton Street Trail that will connect behind East Village. It'll connect to Legacy Park in downtown Ada. And number one in the green is our Thornapple River Pedestrian Bridge. So we've actually, there was a question about MEDC. We've applied for an MEDC RAP grant to connect the downtown. It's about a $1.5 million project. Right now, we're asking for half a million dollars with the Township Trail Fund picking up an additional million dollars of that. And that will allow pedestrians to cross safely, connect to the Phase Street Trail right here, which I had mentioned earlier, and then that runs out to Buttrick and Thornapple, and then will ultimately connect to the Grand River Greenway Trail. One of the really neat components that is shown on here in blue is the township is in the process of purchasing 14.9 acres on the river right here from Mosaic. They're completing the Oxbow Development in Ada Township right now. It'd be 88 mixed-unit residential development. And so we are going to be purchasing that. We're working through final environmental right now. But we are, have estimates to include a paved path all along the Grand River, or Thornapple River, to the Grand River. And originally, this was thought to be in the Grand River Greenway concept, but because it is underwater for part of the year and going to the ADA accessibility and just, you know, user experience, we want to make sure, one, we have a trail that's open year-round, and then, two, if we can supplement that with a seasonal trail that is, provides a different experience, then we want to do that. Knapp Street Bridge, this was discussed a little bit. It's a $7.5 million project, $4 million coming from the township, $3.5 million from the DGRI. The pedestrian bridge would be located on the south side of Knapp. And right now, if you come in from Grand Rapids Township and you hit Grand River, you have to go south. You can't go north to Plainfield Township, and you can go along Knapp, but you're taking your life into your own hands depending on when, what season it is and if school's in session and if there's any construction going on, it creates a lot of issues. One of the things that I wanted to touch on was the importance of the Greenway. Our trail bond actually coincided really nicely with working with the Greenway. I remember being involved in bus tours really early on where a number of stakeholders from Plainfield, from the county and all over rode the bus and kind of talked about, what if we put a trail here? What if we put a trail here? And it really started making us look at our trail system differently and saying, not only how are we enhancing the trail system for Ada residents, but how are we connecting to our neighbors, all parts of the county? And so this has led to many discussions that we weren't having previously, but then also about how are we doing it right as opposed to just doing it the most economic way? Connecting downtown Ada, so as part of the Greenway, the benefit for Ada is that Ada becomes kind of a hub as you're coming from Lowell into Ada into Plainfield into Grand Rapids. And so I've starred in blue, the two residential developments, well, more than 200 units coming online in the downtown in the next year, or next couple of years. The Ada Hotel is going to be opening in the first quarter of 2024. We also have a high number of high-tech companies, software companies in downtown Ada. And so they are a big component. Actually, the owner of Michigan Software Labs is on our Parks Recreation Board, and he's the chair, and he is helping spearhead a lot of these recreational amenities, not only for office workers, for those who want to live in the community, but then also those who are visiting. Here's a rendering of the Thornapple River Pedestrian Bridge. That's what we normally, when we show that rendering, it gets a really good response. This was always part of the plan, even going back to when Legacy Park was first being thought of. And this will allow residents to eliminate a significant Phase Street Thornapple River intersection that we're continuing to look at. And we've, we've done safety improvements. We've continued to have conversations with the Road Commission. But point blank, until we get people out of the road and not having to cross the road, this is the only way to make it safe. One of the really important things that ties into all of this, it's separate from the Greenway, it's separate from the trails, but we're, we just purchased, or we're in the process of purchasing this lot in red. So these are four lots that were actually homes that were torn down, and they were actually scheduled for brand-new, most likely million-dollar homes. And we had a donor in the community who said, this is wrong. This shouldn't be used for residential. This should be part of the park system. We should continue to give people access to the riverfront and then also allow us to expand our park offerings along the riverfront. And so we're working with our Parks Board and our Township Board on how we can reimagine Leonard Field to the south and then this property to create a new park fully encompassed. And so then we'll have Legacy Park over here. We'll have this park, and then this will be the 14.9 acres. And so really creating a river corridor in totality from Cascade Township, Ada Township border up to the Fulton Street Bridge, it'll be 2.37 miles of riverfront that Ada owns and is preserving for the community rather than having riverfront development or high rises or private uses that make it inaccessible. And this is the map of the 14.9 acres that we're going to be purchasing from Oxbow, and this is kind of a rendering of the mixed residential use development. And then this is the proposed trail. So the yellow trail is, would be constructed brand-new, 4,100 feet. Currently, we have a 2,600-foot unpaved walking trail. This is through the Grand River natural area. And then we have a paved trail, and then this runs down to Cascade and McGraw Park. And so we're looking at paving all of this as a portion of this. So if you came through Ada on the Grand River Greenway Trail, you could take the route through the more developed area around Ada Park down Grand River, or you could take the more scenic route, depending on the time of the year and whether the water levels would allow so. And that is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer questions or provide updates on anything else.
Good. Questions? Commissioner Bujack?
Thank you, Chair Steck. Congratulations on all the hard work you've been doing there in Ada, the park, the existing new park there is just amazing.
Legacy Park, yep.
And this whole plan is just very, very forward-thinking. The land that you're talking about where there's four houses, are the houses still there?
Nope. So there was, so there was originally two homes there. They were torn down. And then the developer split it to four lots and had plans for four lots. And so at that point, the developer, or a donor came to us and said, you know, what do you think about expanding this park? We don't think this should be homes. We think this should be part of the park system. And going back to the original legacy plan, Legacy Park Plan, a lot of people already thought the township owned these lots. So when the houses got torn down, we got a lot of calls saying, why did you tear down these houses? And we said, we didn't do this. This was a private developer. And so while we would have loved to retain those homes, they had sat vacant for about 10 years. And so in reality, this is the best outcome of a bad situation and allows people to more, make the river more accessible, especially on the high side of the river as opposed to just the low side of the river, which can cause problem for adding amenities.
And the land has been purchased?
So we're scheduled for closing in a couple of weeks. We're just finishing up our everything. And it was, we have a donation agreement that actually talks about us kicking off this Parks Campaign. And so we're going to be doing about a $5 to $7 million capital campaign for a number of these improvements, amenities to the park, which will include most likely playground equipment, splash pads, pavilions, restroom upgrades, trails, river observation decks, dog park. I mean, every single box we can check, we're going to be trying to check out.
All right. Other questions? Okay, if not, thank you so much, Julius, for getting us an update on what's going on in Ada.
Thank you, and calling up Andy and Catherine from Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. to talk about some of the projects within the city.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Zietz. I'm the Greenway Program Manager for Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. With me is Andy Guy. Just wanted to share a couple of projects we have coming up in partnership with the City of Grand Rapids and many others as we look to connect the Grand River Greenway through the downtown core and then out to Millennium Park and Ottawa County. One project that's been on our radar for a very long time is connecting the White Pine Trail as it ends at Riverside Park in Grand Rapids to the downtown core, going under Ann Street, under a railroad, and under Leonard Street. This has been a project the city has taken leadership on in partnership with the DNR Trust Fund. There's some dollars there. And then the ARPA dollars that DGRI has received will complete the funding for this project, a really key connection as the Grand River Greenway flows across the county and then into the downtown core. So we're excited about this project coming up. And then on the other side of downtown, really also doing a lot of work over the next couple of years to complete some critical connections to not only Millennium Park and then eventually out to Lake Michigan, but very importantly, to some near southwest and southeast side neighborhoods and Wyoming and other neighborhoods on the south side of the river. So that looks like completing a new segment of trail along the 201 Market Site next to the upcoming amphitheater, as well as rehabilitating and then extending Oxford Trail as it cuts across the river, follows Godfrey Street into the Black Hills neighborhood and the Roosevelt Park neighborhood, and then connecting that eventually to Plaster Creek Trail as it cuts through the 49507 neighborhoods and rest of southeast Grand Rapids. So again, this is in partnership with the City of Grand Rapids and using a lot of the Greenway ARPA funds that DGRI has received as a catalyst for future trail development. And so we'll be kicking off design for these projects right now with construction to take place in '25 and '26. One, yeah, deep dive into one trail facility specifically, Oxford Trail, that starts on Wealthy Street on the west side of the river and then cuts south across the river following an old rail corridor. So there's a great view of the river that a lot of people are unaware of, and we'll be looking to enhance that trail facility, strengthen the neighborhood connections to that, be able to tie in some more neighborhood history and culture and art into that facility, and then working with a really friendly developer who owns a lot of the corridor as it continues further south to Hall Street to extend that trail. So some new housing projects coming into that neighborhood and really looking to enhance development that is facing the trail and that interacts with the trail. We see a lot of potential in that area. So that project is $9 million. There's DGRI ARPA funding as well as City of Grand Rapids ARPA funding towards that project, and we'll be kicking off engagement here this fall for construction in 2025. And then I know we're short on time, so, but trying to breeze through this as well. Just wanted to also give you a brief introduction today to the Grand River Network, which is an emerging nonprofit that the county has been a partner in getting set up and set up, getting on its feet, both in leadership from previous Administrator Wayman Britt and also current Administrator Vanderburg sits on this board. This emerging nonprofit is really designed to answer a lot of the questions you have been asking today around, you know, how do we deliver on these really big ideas that our residents have been asking for in terms of a connected system? But beyond infrastructure, how are we activating these spaces? How are we connecting community to the history and the culture of these spaces? How are we stewarding and maintaining these spaces long-term as they flow through, across many jurisdictions? And as even within the City of Grand Rapids limits with private development, with convention and arenas and all of these things together, how do we maximize this regional benefit for our community? So we have a quick packet Josh has that he can send you afterwards about the mission and the vision of this new nonprofit. Ben, over the past year, working on a lot of the organizational infrastructure and behind the scenes, but really prioritizing a broad representation of members from across the community, both in geography and also in expertise. Really grateful for Sam's leadership and Administrator Vanderburg's leadership in getting this set up and running. But as we look into the next year, three emerging priorities are really delivering on all this infrastructure work and maximizing the moment of the ARPA funds that we have at hand to catalyze future trail development. Really having some intentional conversations with partners around long-term care and stewardship of these spaces once they're built. And then also really just a lot of communication and engagement to get our community up to speed on what is happening and really just getting back to that great experience that we can deliver for our residents in terms of using the trail and maximizing recreational and social and environmental benefits. So that was fairly quick, but any questions?
Any more questions? All right. Well, that's the value of going last, huh?
Great. And I know we mentioned these, but just not to lose sight of, there are these other catalytic projects that are being planned along the Greenway, and that will, this infrastructure will enhance those uses and vice versa and add more users to the space. But just overall, you know, in 10 years, you know, I think the vision for everyone is this is the thing that experienced Grand Rapids and the Sports Commission and all are going to be promoting as we promote our region and as a place to not just visit, but also live and work. And so just very significant effort that will take time and a lot of partnerships and a lot of questions that we will be answering along the way. So I guess with that, I know there are a lot of questions, but just, oh, sorry. One more slide. So this is not the only Greenway in Kent County. Actually, all of Kent County is actually in the, in a watershed, so not to lose sight of that. And we actually have five rivers in Kent County. And you look at some of the stuff that we've already doing, so the recent acquisition, the 12-mile acquisition along the Rogue River, also along the White Pine Trail, the Two Rivers acquisition along the Thornapple River. And so we, those Greenways represent an expansion opportunity for these Greenway connections as we look at, how do we connect all of Kent County residents to our waterways and Greenways? So with that, if there's any broader questions, I or some representative would be happy to answer anything that you have.
Any, any final questions? If not, it probably sounds trite to say there's a lot of moving parts, but there's a lot of moving parts. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bujack?
Thank you, Chair. Can we get this presentation sent to the Commissioners?
I suspect we can have this package distributed.
Absolutely. Yeah, but the big file, we'll figure that out. But also, you also received the packet that Catherine mentioned as well in your email, so, but we'll get this out. Absolutely.
All right, good. As I said, a lot of moving parts, a lot of updated events going to happen over the next few years, so we look forward to continuing to monitor the progress of this, so. All right. Public comment? Any public comment for the board at this point? I see none. Any miscellaneous from board members? I see none. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.